Hey, may I call to order the May 27, 2025 meeting of the High Point Regional High School Board of Education. Please stand for flagrant. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Open Public Meetings Act statement: The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. And according to the provisions of the Act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted at the Augusta, Branchville, and Sussex post offices, and notice sent to the New Jersey Herald, the Sunday Herald, and the Clerk of the boroughs of Branchville and Sussex, and the townships of Frankford, Lafayette, and Wantage. Our mission statement: High Point Regional High School in partnership with staff, family, and community is dedicated to the quest for individual excellence. By fostering high standards of achievement, we prepare students to become responsible and productive members of a diverse society. I'll ask for vocal advice.
Mr. Denny?
Present.
Mrs. Diaz is absent. Ms. Hall is absent. Ms. Longburg?
Here.
Ms. Horsey is absent. Ms. Poundsec is absent. Ms. Shune is absent. Mr. Van Stone?
Here.
Ms. Wise?
Here.
Dr. Reddick?
Here.
Okay, we do not yet have a quorum, so we won't proceed to any business that needs to be voted on, but we will make a motion to enter executive session, provide an update on legal personnel and negotiation items which are exempt from public participation pursuant to New Jersey Public Law 1975 Chapter 231 Open Public Meetings Act. Any discussions held by the Board which need not remain confidential will be made public when appropriate minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. The Board will reconvene in public session, in person and virtually at the conclusion of the executive session. It is not anticipated that any action will be taken. In fact, we will have no action taken. And we expect to return approximately 7:00 PM. So I will move that by voice. All in favor?
I am.
Any opposed?
May I have a motion to return to public session?
Okay.
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed. We're returning to public session and just recognizing that we now have eight form of board members present. So moving to our action items, approval of minutes, regular meeting minutes, April 29, 2025, and executive session minutes of April 29, 2025. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, corrections?
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Lumber?
Yes.
Ms. Vanshaw?
Yes.
Ms. Shuman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
That brings us to public comments on agenda items only. In accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, we will open public comments for agenda items only. At this time, your speaker should state his or her name and address. You will have three minutes to address the board, which will be timed by myself. We will limit this section to no longer than 45 minutes. Please be respectful and mindful that your comments are being recorded. Don't see anybody in attendance here that may make comments. Do we happen to have anybody virtually?
No.
May I have a motion to close public comments?
Who?
A second.
I.
All in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed. Okay, moving on to presentations. We don't see Mr. Kyle Lebansky, Speaker of the House, in this update. I imagine nearing the end of the school year that he's got other things on his mind. But we are going to read a resolution. Be it resolved that the High Point Regional High School Board of Education honors student representative Kyle Lebansky for service on the High Point Regional High School Board of Education. Whereas Kyle Lebansky has served with distinction on the HBRHS Board of Education and through their leadership, whereas through their leadership, the HBRHS Board of Education has gained fresh insights into student concerns, student priorities, and what is on the mind of young people in the community. And whereas they have further contributed to the community by serving as a valuable spokesperson, sharing the student perspective at board meetings. And whereas Kyle's exemplary commitment to fellow students in the school district has promoted clear communication between the board, district administration, and the student body. And whereas Kyle has maintained a professional decorum at board meetings, shown respect to board members, and strive to learn the proper etiquette of serving on a school board. And whereas they have demonstrated a commitment to advancing the education of all students without neglecting their own responsibility to strive for success in the classroom. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the HBRHS Board of Education recognizes Kyle Lebansky's dedication and commitment to advancing educational opportunity and open communication between the board, district administrators, and the student body. And be it further resolved that the members of the HBRHS Board of Education extend their sincere appreciation to Kyle Lebansky for their dedicated service on the HBRHS Board of Education. And be it further resolved that the members of the HBRHS Board of Education extend their best wishes to Kyle and all of their future endeavors. I don't think we have to accept that, right? So that was just a resolution. Thank you, Mr. Lebansky, for your service on our board, and we wish you best of luck. Thanks.
We'll make sure that he's distributed the signed resolution from both president and the vice president. Thank you.
Not likely to be framed, Kyle, so don't get upset. Okay, moving on with our presentations. We have HBA Acting President?
Acting President, yeah. Let me take the podium.
What's that more comfortable with you?
Okay, good. Okay, so I just wanted to introduce myself. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Melissa Sunda. I've been teaching here at High Point for 22 years, and I will be continuing on as the acting president on behalf of the HPA Union. So I'm honored to be the collective voice for this union. I've been serving as the vice president under parliament who served for the last three years. And with her absence, I will continue out this year and the rest of her term, which goes into next year, hopefully. And so I just wanted to thank you for that and introduce myself to you. As far as any updates, we would like to hopefully get all everything by the end of this year as far as our contract goes. And we have about 16 days left, so I think the staff is getting kind of anxious for the end of the year. But like I said, everything is going well. And then also on personal note, I'm also grateful for you approving our well-watched certificate. I haven't done in over five years, so we're doing that. We're giving it in two days. At 6:00 AM on Thursday, so we'll be back on Saturday. But yeah, we're taking 45 students to Cape Cod, so I'm happy. So thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you. Welcome to your floor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we're going to move to curriculum instruction with the Shane family. Mr. Dunn lives at the state playoff baseball game today. Unfortunately, went extra innings, incredible game, and lost to bottom eight to two of us in all three quarters. Really weird season for great coaches for our students and great coaches for our grads. And thank you to Ms. Sunda for the persistence in making that turn happen. It's an incredible amount of work. So really excited to do 45 students, being able to, you know, to go. So really thrilled to be up there. Equally as thrilled, our annual performance report, it's not quite well watching, but there is some really good encouraging information to them. Once a year, the Department releases an exhaustive report on every school and every district in Jersey. It's easily accessible, it's transparent, it's cumbersome, but if you take the time, you can find out a great deal of information. Just search it, it's right there. And the report that I'm presenting tonight is posted to our website. So if you just go to the bottom right of the opening of our website, you can read this report. And also the link to go and read the full report is available. So I took a look at the report over the last month and identified some obvious areas of growth and a couple of areas where we clearly could still be improving. First off on growth, I can identify eight areas. The first four are assessments. Increase performance across the board. Math and English better, better, better. The teachers are working in PLCs, they're administering common assessments. The teachers in the math and English department have been very committed to improvement. Mr. Drellik and his department and their leadership is to be applauded. Our PSAT scores went up 40 points in a year where the state average PSAT score went down. So we're very pleased that our assessment scores averaged. Also, another four areas that jumped out as significant. Our product absenteeism, which is a statewide focus, dropped for the third consecutive year as we continue to return to something relative to normal after the pandemic, from 20% to 18% to 15%. The number of, the percentage of students that were suspended one or more times dropped from 90% to 7%. 7% is too high, but the downward trend is encouraging. So we're pleased by that statistic that we take very seriously and want to see it continue to drop. Our graduation rate rose from 93% to 97%, and the number of kids was more than twice half. Those are some very encouraging pieces of evidence that indicate that many of the things that we're doing are working and are working well, so we're encouraged by that. Our SAT scores went down, and I listed that as inconclusive because it's a year where the number of students nationally in High Point taking the test increased. States of colleges have now suddenly returned to requiring SATs in many instances. There are still a lot of test optional colleges, but five years ago, there was a significantly greater number of test optional. So with that trend, we've seen uptick in students taking it. Naturally, the broader cross-section of students taking the assessment led to a slight downtick in results. With all these students going to more elite colleges that need to score for competitive purposes, our testing is a bit higher. We're looking into it further. We want that score like the PSATs to be strong. Areas for improvement are also areas that are listed for growth. We are not satisfied with our math and Latin results, even though they've gone up. And we want to see in science the level of growth on that state assessment that English and math has. Statewide, there's a real challenge with the science assessment. They administered it for 27 years, and basically it never counted for anything, and it was sort of this dismissed assessment. It's given to juniors in the year that they're already heavily tested and mildly not as inclined to pour themselves into it, so it's a tough assessment. Our goal, though, is to really work on not just the juniors, but the ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders. Showing them more assessment-type questions to get them better prepared to succeed. So we're excited about that. The federal government establishes growth metrics. And for these four critical areas, math, science, graduation, product absenteeism, they set the target for every district that you need to meet. And we exceeded the goal in all four areas, so we're pretty pleased about that. It was a really good report. You look first and foremost at yourself, and you want to see growth. We are not satisfied with lots of the data. And it gives you, um, goals to work on. So, um, we look at it and take it seriously, um, and we want growth and improvement to persist. Interestingly, last week, we administered the largest, uh, test administration in probably school history. Ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders all tested. So there's a lag here. The assessment that our students took last week will be, um, uh, the results of the performance report that's presented a year from today. And so I guess what I'm saying is many of the things that we're trying to implement to, uh, ensure that growth continues, um, are already in effect. And, um, hopefully, uh, will bear fruit when we get the results in a few weeks and the tests that were last week. Having said that, though, I want to thank our entire school community because, um, people are, um, creatures of habit. And when you have a thousand people and you change the entire school schedule, um, and it goes exceedingly well, um, that's a testament to our students and to our staff. And to, uh, Ms. Jessica Brooks in the curriculum office, who could probably lead a unit into that all. Uh, she worked on this for months and so much, so many changes. So we're very thankful for her efforts and the fact that it was a success. I just want to say, there were instances where seniors and sophomores weren't testing. So it's pretty tough to give a test to six hundred students and find something to do for the other two hundred, keep them occupied. Some of our staff volunteered to take a risk with students that weren't their own, guide them through an enrichment activity. Um, and it was very successful. So, um, changing things up for two days and having it go really well was a nice reflection of our staff and our students. Again, that performance report is on our website, and all schools and all, um, districts for the last decade are easily accessible on a lot of the computer. Any questions? Great, thank you.
So that, I think that's the end of our presentations. Under other business, we have just a notice that the retirement and service recognition awards are scheduled for Friday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, at twelve-thirty in the auditorium. So we'll move on to our action items, curriculum, instruction, and technology. Turn it over.
Okay, so items one, two, and three are faculty attendance for April, student attendance for April, and the suspension report for April. And then I will be, uh, moving items four through six together. Item four is the harassing investigation and bullying report from April thirtieth through May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. There is an attachment. Uh, number five are the field trips, um, with an attachment, and number six, professional development activities with an attachment. Any motions to keep in a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Uh, personnel, do I have to say anything about personnel? Can I be interested in? I thought you were for transportation.
I'm going to try and move them together. I just read through that.
I would move the first two separate, and then after that, I think you can correct. Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Sure.
So, Ms. Mel, uh, number one, it's recommended, um, to accept and regret the retirement, uh, Ms. Ricardi, who was my former arts teacher. And, uh, number two is recommended, uh, to accept and regret the retirement, uh, Heather Strout, English language arts teacher.
Any, um, any motion?
Any motion, please?
Any discussion?
My, my family's benefited from both of these instructors. They're incredible teachers, professionals, and so we will be greatly missed in the High Point community.
Each, uh, each of these educators, and that's what they are, worthy of the title of educator, are two exceptional human beings who have a vast imprint across this society, this society, the culture and community. The impact that they've had on a generation of kids is truly exceptional. It's something about which I'm hopeful that they're very proud for now, for the rest of their lives. Being an educator is an exceedingly difficult job, particularly in the world today. To be able to have done so with a great success, the great compassion, the great love, and the great inspiration that each of one of these ladies, Ms. Teresa Ricardi and Ms. Heather Strout, have demonstrated for decades, is not something that we could ever replace. And, uh, there, the imprint of these two human beings on this community is something that would long outlive their presence here, and it's something to be lauded and appreciated. And I personally appreciate each of them professionally and personally. They are exceptional, and they will be missed. Congratulations.
Wish them, person wish them the best in their, absolute best in their retirement.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to move three and twelve together, so, um, number three is, uh, approving extended medical leave for employee ten fifty, effective May eighth to June fifth. Um, number four is, uh, extending medical leave for employee fourteen oh eight from June ninth to the end of the school year. Number five is, um, approving campus partner as substitute secretary and substitute for professional aid, effective May eighth for remainder of school year. Number six is recommended, um, to approve the summer work dates for the guidance department and child studies. Number seven is recommended, uh, to approve James Hethink Jr. as substitute teacher for remainder of the school year, pending, uh, receipt of current paperwork. Number eight is recommended to approve Kayla Velez as a special education ELA teacher for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, as noted in the salary and staff. Number nine is recommended to approve Thomas Edge as a special education ELA teacher for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, um, as noted in the salary and staff guide. Number ten is recommended to approve the following, uh, list of individuals as listed, uh, with the twenty twenty-five summer custodial workers, um, at the minimum wage hourly rate of fifteen forty-nine, pending receipt of all paperwork. The list is there. Number eleven is recommended to approve, uh, the list as stated of bus drivers for the twenty twenty-five ESY program and summer athletic trips as needed at their regularly, regular hourly rate. And number twelve is recommended to approve the individuals listed, um, to work during the extended school year program, which begins July seventh through August seventh, um, to maintain their hourly rate based on the twenty-three, twenty-four earned day rates. Any motion? Second?
Second? Oh.
Any discussion?
Oh, okay. Sorry, there's a, there's another item.
Oh, oh, sorry.
You can, you, who's that separate, we're gonna do that separate.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
All right, and one more item, um, number thirteen on the agenda. Uh, it's recommended to approve Elise Gervais, um, as an English language arts teacher for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, um, at step ten, um, the salary guide, um, the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four salary guide, pending receipt of all required paperwork. Any motion?
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Item number two, Ms. Longberg. Uh, extracurricular, I will move, uh, all three items together. One is a recommendation to accept the resignation notification from Faith Card as rules of system. Across coach, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Item two is a recommendation to approve the extracurricular appointments for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year as listed in page sixty-one. And item three is a recommendation to accept the resignation notification from Teresa Ricardi as fall play director, spring musical director, technical director, and chamber singers advisor due to her retirement, effective July first, twenty twenty-five. I will make that motion. May I have a second? Any, uh, comments or discussion there?
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Uh, no policy negotiations or buildings and grounds action items, so I'll move right to finance. And under finance, I'll move, um, one through five together. One is a recommendation to accept a report of the board secretary business administrator for a month of April twenty twenty-five. Item two is a recommendation to accept a report of the treasurer for a month of April twenty twenty-five. Item three is a recommendation to approve the report of transfers and minimum expense transfer report for April twenty twenty-five. Item four is a recommendation to approve the payment, the attached schedule of audited bills dated May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Item five is a recommendation to accept the adult education agency account, athletic account, cafeteria account, construction account, principals' petty cash account, scholarship account, school store, and student activities reconciliations for April twenty twenty-five. Uh, I'll make that motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay, Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Let me move six. Uh, six is a recommendation that Board of Education hereby approve the purchase service, uh, services agreement between the High Point Regional Board of Education and the Frankfurt Board of Education for the buildings and ground supervisor, effective July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, in accordance with NJSA forty-eight, cone sixty-five dash point. Uh, and we'll make that motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to say that, um, I think it's great for sharing services, and I think it's very friskfully responsible and great for our community schools to share services, so I appreciate the effort about that.
Thank you. We're very pleased that we had a really, uh, participant, so we're very blessed for that. And it's been very positive. I'm very pleased, so thank you.
Pro call.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
I'll move the remaining, uh, three items under finance. Uh, seven is a recommendation that the board acknowledges and gratefully accepts a donation of five yards of ground mulch approximately valued two hundred dollars delivered from Winkle Supply for our rain garden. Item A is a recommendation to, uh, board grant permission to the High Point Wildcat Baseball Club to host a non-affiliated co-ed camp, April seventeenth, twelfth, uh, which will run June twenty-four through June twenty-seventh, as listed. And item nine is a recommendation to approve and authorize execution of the following tuition contract uh, between High Point Regional, as the sending district, and the following district, uh, and related information as listed. I will make that motion for seven through nine. May I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Dunn?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, but I failed to, uh, alert Dr. Ripley to add to the agenda. We also had a very generous donation of mulch from the Donahue family for another project on campus. Just wanted to say thank you to them, um, for their continued support, um, and for the mulch donation that they've, um, recently made.
Okay, what's that? Maybe we'll get that on the next agenda.
Okay, obviously.
Memorialize it, but thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, pro call.
Uh, Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Uh, that brings us to transportation, like we passed Mr. Van Stone to run us to those.
Alrighty, uh, there's a lot that I will be moving them all together because they are all, uh, just nothing outstandingly different, uh, than the former. So it's items one, fifteen that I will be moving together. Uh, first three are, uh, trips that are, uh, executing.
Second, executing quoted contracts. Number two, uh, four is a, uh, no, that four is also a quoted contract. Five is a, one of our transportation agreements. Six is, um, another quoted contract. Seven is, uh, seven is another quoted transportation agreement as listed, of course. Eight, uh, eight through twelve, eight through, yeah, twelve are just renewal of contracts, that have consisted of renewing them. And then, uh, just thirteen and fourteen and fifteen are also renewed contracts. I just wanted to note, uh, on those separately that if you look at them, uh, they have lots of, of, uh, information on them. It's listed in so many places. It looks like we go to a public noted places. It's just that these contracts are all, uh, they get, um, approved by the board. That way we don't have to negotiate, we don't have to be negotiated as needed next year, uh, rates, if we do end up going to these places that they don't really negotiate with. Just because something is listed there does not mean that the money is going to be spent on it. So that is, uh, I, uh, so that's all of them. Uh, so I'm gonna move that they get passed. Uh, give me a second.
Second.
Does anybody have any discussion? Alright.
Ms. Longberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schuman?
Yes.
Ms. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Van Stone?
Yeah.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
That concludes our action items. Uh, no, no correspondence that we proceed. Under miscellaneous, uh, no, actually, we'll mention these under noncommittee board member reports. So, uh, that brings us to our second public comments section of the evening, seeing the rules apply, uh, as the prior section. Nobody's joined us in person, nothing online, so I'll ask for a motion to close second public comments. A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, under noncommittee board member reports, I'm gonna go first if you have mine. Um, just wanted to note, uh, that a few of, uh, board members were independents at the scholarship awards dinner. Thank you, Ms. Schuman and Mr. Van Stone, uh, for helping me present that award and for, Ms. Schuman, for, um, your work in selecting the candidate with your committee. Uh, it was, as it is always, an incredible evening. And to see how many different community organizations come out and support our students is, is always just humbling. And, you know, like I said, great evening. We were going to have a presentation from Mrs. Calsec on the delegate assembly that she attended, uh, represented High Point Regional Board at NJSBA Delegate Assembly, I think it was May tenth? Or thereabouts. Um, we'll put that, maybe you, I'll ask her to present that next month. And also in the last month, we had, uh, a sous-technical school boards meeting where, um, a number of people were, uh, recognized in the county for their service. And, uh, I did want to recognize Mrs. Corsey, who obtained her new board member certification uh, during the past month or two and was recognized at that, uh, at that meeting.
Mr. Dunn was also recognized at that meeting for, um, for his long tenure in service at the High Point Board of Education. And many of those years serving as president of Board of Education. It is not frequent, particularly in regional high schools, I think, to have someone, uh, serve as long as Mr. Dunn has, and he was so recognized, I think it was a couple weeks ago. I'm duly, duly noted, so congratulations.
Thank you. Any other noncommittee board member reports or comments? May I have a motion to adjourn? Move in a second?
Second.